Thank you to all who could come tonight. We appreciate you being here. I know so close to the holidays, too. All right, thank you. Please raise your eyes for the pledge.
Pledge and reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which expands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight's meeting should not be too long. So if anyone hasn't voted yet, they can go vote.
Time to do that.
Still time to vote. Um, so first, we have our minutes from our last board meeting, December third. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, can I have a motion, please? Moved by Ray, seconded by Stephanie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so carried. Okay, there is no correspondence tonight to share, um, but we did have a curriculum committee meeting.
We did.
So, so would you like to give us a little update?
Absolutely. So Anne and Lynn and I are on the, right, on the curriculum committee. Oh Lynn, you're not on that with me?
No, I am.
You are?
Yeah. I wasn't at this.
Right, you weren't at this meeting, but you're on that committee with me, with us. Um, and this one was, as always, great and very well prepared by the Lisa and Meredith and her team. Um, and we had asked about, you know, to give us what's going on with the science of reading. And of course, you know, this is a term we've all heard now, right? Um, and so I was very curious about, so is this just gonna be another reading program? Is this gonna be, what is this? So, you know, basically it's a, based on the scientific research of how kids learn to read. Um, and one quote that I liked was, it says, "Brain-friendly instruction to help students develop strong word recognition and language comprehension skills." So just to, just to tell you that this, you know, um, I know Dr. Fox has been on top of this and looking at this and preparing for this all along. Um, and comparing our, what we have been doing in the teaching of reading to what is, what kind of a shift and how dramatic of a, of a shift will it be? And of course, over the years, um, in my own personal experience, Nanyuette has made certain changes and additions to their program to come along with some of this. Um, and this is just the beginning introductory discussion for us as to what's, what's happening, basically. Um, there was a, an, um, where is it? There was a, um, survey that asked the staff, like, where are you on a scale of one to five? How much do you know? And, you know, except for the couple of few outliers, you know, on one and five, most of the staff knows something, but not, you know, they're not there yet. So basically, you know, we're talking about ongoing, uh, PD opportunities, um, that have been offered this year, including individual PD, and I didn't really understand what this is, I was going to ask Dr. Fox tonight, but approval for micro-credential at SUNY New Poles. You feel, you look at.
Yeah, it's a micro-credential in science of reading.
So there's, someone would come out actually being certified?
Correct.
Is this something new or?
It, I, it is a new credential.
Interesting, okay. Um, and of course, they, they've had this, uh, person working with Nanyuette called Dr. Katie Cunningham, who has come a few times now.
She's a very well, highly regarded, very well-known, um, person in the field with science of reading. So she was here, uh, election day, um, in November for professional learning for teachers, um, teachers in the K through six continuum. So she was here with them. And now she was here the other day, as a matter of fact, the day of our meeting. And she was, uh, going into classrooms in all of the buildings and going to, into teachers' classrooms to give them feedback, to see what they were doing, to help, um, better understand, like, where individual, individual teachers are, um, and giving individual teachers feedback on what they're doing. So we're working with her over the course.
And I think that'll be interesting to get that feedback as far as her assessment of, you know, what's really happening in the trenches, kind of thing. Um, uh, let's see, some of the challenges that, you know, going forward, um, how do we organize our ELA blocks? Um, do we, what resources, professional development? How do we meet, meet the needs of, uh, struggling readers and writers? And of course, my favorite, how do we encourage and keep the joy of reading and writing in our students, right? Because if kids don't enjoy it, then it's really like, literally like pulling teeth. And, um, you know, basically, this is, um, you know, as I said, a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff has been happening so far. Um, but this is kind of our first, uh, look into what the plans are going forward. So, um, you know, a lot of brain research and so on, if you wanna get into it, I was looking at some of the research. Um, you know, my feeling always is, you don't know, have to know how a car works in order to drive it, or even to, how to teach somebody to drive it, right? But you do have to be aware that something's happening under the hood. So, um, I, I know that, I'm a first grade teacher at Macon, I always make things simplistic, right?
Something is happening.
I know something's gotta be happening.
There's a spin and there's a go and that's, that's about as much as I know.
And somebody's gotta figure out the parts and tell me how to do it better. So, um, and I, you know, it was a really productive, very productive meeting.
Yeah, that's true.
I don't mean to make it simplistic, 'cause it's, it's not.
Right.
Um, and we'll get more information on it as it goes along.
Are teachers utilizing the approach in the classroom generally across the board?
They're, they're, I, they're, they are beginning to, some are further along than others.
Yeah, right. And it's positive so far?
Oh, yeah.
The, uh, well, that brings me to, did you have a question?
Yeah, just one of the things that we discussed during that meeting, which, you know, kind of opened my mind. It's the book that the fifth graders are reading, Out of My Mind.
Well, that's what I was going to.
Oh, you're gonna talk about that?
Yeah, that, going to Chris's question about all the teachers using it. So we have, and Lisa had sent you, um, the grant, our first grant, um, application, right?
I saw that in the line.
Uh, so this is in line with the science of reading.
Right, yes, I got that. I was just wondering how widespread it was and, you know, being utilized and.
Different levels, you know, I mean, this is.
Right, of course.
With only incidencing stages, right?
Okay.
Um, but this is, uh, was an excellent grant proposal. Uh, the committee reviewed it. Did you get a chance, Lynn, to, to?
I, I looked at it a quick bit.
Mm-hmm. Um, and basically, you know, it's funny, 'cause I have a fifth grader, uh, grandson. And after meeting, I said to him, "By the way, are you reading a bu-" "Oh," I didn't even, that's all I said, "Are you reading a book?" And he immediately jumped all over it. "It's great, we love it, it's so fantastic," which is how it was described to us.
I actually wrote that book.
Oh, I loved it.
Yeah.
I just, I just ordered it.
You did, oh, you did, yeah?
To Barnes and Noble, that day.
Oh, I have to.
I've read it since that day, but I mean, it's. Have you read it? 'Cause I ordered it as Christmas presents.
For my grand.
Oh, good for, that's great.
It's a good book, yeah.
It's, it's on, it's, it just takes you into another place.
Yeah, it's fabulous.
I have, you know, children who, you know, have, uh, difficulties learning or, I mean, just, wow. What a great book.
Oh, I'm glad you did that. Right, but it's not, it, it isn't, I haven't read it, but I did order it as Christmas presents.
Oh, I ordered it.
But the idea here is that, and, you know, again, I have a very small understanding of this, but the idea here is that children, you know, we've done a lot of leveling of reading, right? So, um, and which was a, a big thing, have had to level your libraries and get kids into the right book, the right hand and the, you know. But now this is, we're making sure that kids, no matter what level of reading they're, they are at at that point, they are also getting grade-level, um, instruction in, uh, the kind of things that they are being introduced to. So a shared reading experience that is on their grade level with teachers who are helping them model the metacognition that is going on as they're reading, right? So that's really what this is about. The teachers have gotten together and planned all of the, where I'm gonna stop and how we're go, what we're going to discuss and so on. Um, and the grant is, um, to have a meeting, a Zoom meeting with the author. And that's what that, um, money would go for as they're culminating experience, because there are three books in that series.
In that series, yeah.
Um, and we had asked, uh, if possibly we could also get some copies of the next titles for each of the classrooms. So in addition to the money for the speaker. So that's kind of what happened at that meeting, um, very exciting stuff going on. Uh, you know, just hoping that the teachers aren't too overwhelmed, because it, you know, when you get into studying about the brain and how it works and how people, you know, learn, that can be, um, you know, a lot to take in. So I, I, I'm interested to hear more about this, Katie, Dr. Cunningham. Um, and if anybody has any other questions, don't ask me, because Meredith is here tonight. So I don't really know. Um, but, you know, thank you for keeping the board informed and, you know, if you do have any questions, of course.
Yeah, of course.
Send them to Lisa.
I know, I will send them to Meredith.
Anyway, that's, that's.
I'm excited about the book.
Yeah, that's hard to recoup.
That's great.
And it's also exciting that the grant, that's the one applied.
Yeah, that's why I wanted it sent to everybody, so that.
And I spoke to the high school teachers last week or the week before, presented the grant to them so that everybody was understanding what was the, um, what was available. Um, I'm going to Highview next, uh, or maybe this week, one of the, I mean, but, at any rate. Um, so the teachers are aware that the grants are available. Miller, uh, Marion had already presented them at Miller, so.
So maybe we'll get more applications.
Yeah, I would think so. Oh, I think you're gonna get applications.
It's good we're doing this on like a rolling basis.
It's a rolling basis, right.
That's awesome, that's great.
Yep.
So.
So no absolute deadlines or deadlines.
Yeah, no, it's a rolling basis.
Yep, okay, great.
Yep.
Good, so we'll see what, what comes through.
Yeah, this was.
Thank you.
I mean, um, Lauren Damitovitz is a gem and she was very prepared and very excited and, you know, which she was going.
She was going, yeah.
Right, wants somebody who's invested and excited and bringing something forward, 'cause that,
Great.
you know, is contagious.
Fantastic.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you for going to that meeting, too. And for the update. All right, we have, um, one more announcement tonight. Um, this is the proposition to voters regarding the purchase of thirty-two Highview Avenue property. Um, today is the vote. Uh, Nanyuette School District voters can cast their vote until nine PM today, the seventeenth, at the high school gym number three. So if you're registered to vote in the general election, you're eligible to vote. So if anyone has not voted yet today, you still have some time. All right, uh, Dr. Brady, uh, Superintendent for four eight, here we go.
So busy time of year, as you know, just an announcement, um, I'm sure everybody knows, but schools will be closed from December twenty-third through January first. So we return to school on Thursday, January second. I wanted to mention that only because some districts are off for two weeks and there's a little bit of chatter around, are we off for two weeks, are we not? So we are not off for, for the full two weeks. We are coming back on Thursday, January second. Um, so some announcements from the buildings, um, so we'll start with BAR. Um, the fifth grade Word Masters Challenge Club has commenced for the year. We've had, um, lots of, um, individual achievement. Um, Colton Mackey secured a first-place finish with a score of seventeen out of twenty. Um, so he did really well. Um, Joshua Rosenfeld was sixteen out of twenty. And then there was a four-way tie for third place among our students, so, um, scoring fifteen out of twenty. Uh, Alie, uh, uh, Alina Arujo, Robbie Call, Ethan Rosenfeld, and Elliot Stone. So considering that this was their first challenge, the results were very noteworthy. Um, and then the sixth grade Word Masters Club, Sonia Kanter, uh, had nineteen out of twenty. And she did really well last year, you might remember, we talked about this. Uh, Leilani Ocampo was next to her with seventeen out of twenty, and Denise Lema, um, sixteen out of twenty. So this is, um, students' ability to retain and apply knowledge they developed from last year. Um, and it has a lot to do with word analogies and understanding of word analogies, the relationships between words and et cetera. So that's what they're, kind of, the competition is about. So congratulations to all our middle schoolers, um, who are participating in this program. Um, our five through eight winter concert series has concluded, and so I just wanna say that the kids did amazing. Um, I'm gonna say thanks to Dr. Skaba and the whole music department. Um, not only on their award, which, if you're at those concerts, you can see why they would have received the award, because we really have a highly evolved music program. The kids did a great job, um, at all levels. Um, but particularly with the young students that are in orchestra, um, they're really quite proficient for their age. I've, I've been around a few orchestras in my day, and, um, they, they are definitely, um, they're definitely proficient. It was wonderful, and hopefully the community and parents and everyone enjoyed being there, um, this year. Uh, the BAR PTL, PTA held a very successful holiday boutique last week, so thanks for, to the PTA and everything they do. Second quarter progress reports will be available later this week for all BAR students. So, uh, just a reminder to parents to remember to check when logging into the portal. Um, and then later this week, uh, BAR will be sending out their multicultural holiday greeting video, uh, which is a collaborative project between our student ambassadors, Mr. Garrison's Grade Eight Video Class. So, uh, they will be wishing all of our BAR families a joyous season filled with health and happiness with, uh, multicultural videos. So stay tuned for that. I'll send it, I'll send it to you once we have it, make sure everybody has it. Um, athletics, uh, the Nanyuette Boys Basketball Team was recognized with the Twenty-three Twenty-four Sportsmanship Award on Friday, uh, December thirteenth, prior to the game at Rye. Uh, the Rockland County Referees Association presented the school with a banner, and the president of the association spoke of the Nanyuette community's commitment to emphasizing sportsmanship before, during, and after contests. Yep, and here's an excerpt from the speech. Congratulations to the Nanyuette basketball program for their commitment to sportsmanship. Thank you to the coaches and players from the boys program, the table personnel and supervision for their control of contests, the principals and A.D. for facilitating a positive environment, and the Nanyuette spectators and community for conducting themselves in a positive way on game day. So, um, congratulations. We, we really try to, we, we make sportsmanship a priority here at Nanyuette on all of our levels, all of our fields. Um, and it's honored, an honor to be recognized by the Rockland County, uh, Referees Association. So, um, congratulations to Phil and to all of our, our program. Um, at Highview this Thursday, coming up, will host our first drive for twenty-five Assembly to recognize students who have been working hard to read at least twenty-five books this school year. So, um, stay tuned for more of that, we're excited about that. And also coming up Thursday, January ninth, is Ruler Family Night. So, um, that was extremely popular last year. We're open from six to seven-thirty at Highview. So, um, if you wanna stop in for family ruler night and see how that works, um, I would encourage you to do that. K through four holiday spirit days are this week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Wednesday, tomorrow, is comfy and cozy day. Thursday is pajama day, I don't know how that's different. Cozy day, whatever that week.
Sweaters.
It is. And Friday is ugly sweater festive clothing day across the district. So please come in your ugliest sweater on Friday. Uh, Miller hosted their, uh, also their annual holiday boutique last week. So thanks to everyone that participated and helped the little ones with their buying decisions and their gifts for family members. And kindergarten will be hosting a hibernation gallery walk, museum walk, for first and second grade students and their parents on Thursday to showcase their habitats and all that they learned about their hibernating animal. So, um, and I just wanna shout out to Roseanne Mercado and the FRC hosted some families to offer materials and assistance to those who needed some help putting together their dioramas. Because again, you know, we talk about cultural, uh, you know, cultural responsiveness and all of that, but, you know, that idea of a diorama might be something that for people from other cultures, that's not necessarily something that they understand or know. So Roseanne was helping to, to facilitate that. So thanks to all of them for their generosity and their help of our, with our families. And then at the high school, another busy place, um, our Student Senate began with the Holiday Stockings for Heroes Drive, which is, uh, was a big success at providing, um, holiday stockings for soldiers. So, uh, students were involved with that, Student Senate was involved with that. And on this Friday, the Student Senate is posted, hosting their Student Ugly Sweater Day on December twentieth. So, um, they do a collection and the proceeds benefit, benefit the Soup Angels Food Kitchen. Uh, so thanks to, um, to Peggy Panker and the Student Senate. Um, and then also this week, the Nanyuette High School Music Department is again doing their fifteen-minute holiday concerts. So it's a series began today with the band. Um, these happen during unit lunch, so it's ten fifty in the auditorium. Tomorrow, Wednesday is chorus, and Thursday is the orchestra. So they come in for fifteen minutes of holiday music and cheer, so, in the auditorium. So that's lots of fun and keeping the spirit, keeping spirits bright here at the high school. And then last, I just wanna point out, we received, I announced this last time we were together, but our banner, uh, which was picked up today, or we delivered today, of our Blue Store, uh, Blue Star School for Financial Literacy. So, uh, we're, we're recognized by the Wise Foundation, which is working in supportive education. So congratulations to the high school and, um, uh, to Lucy Savara and everyone that's involved in the financial literacy arena too as well.
That's it for me.
Yep, lots going on.
Great. It's a good thing, thank you.
All good things, yep.
Okay, next is public forum. I'm going to read the statement, and then we'll see if anyone would like to address. Guess we have to go through it. Okay, public forum is an opportunity.
I'm gonna make a money bet that that's a no, just.
I'm not sure we're allowed to skip over it.
You are allowed to skip over it, it's a number.
Public, public forum is an opportunity to make, uh, for the public to make statements to the Board of Education. Statements are not made to other members of the public. The Board does not routinely comment on personnel issues in public. It is the Board's strong recommendation that any criticisms or compliments concerning personnel be made in writing and not presented at the open forum. Comments made in writing allow the Board to review the comments in detail and to ask Superintendent to review the comments and take action if necessary. Would anyone like to address the board? No, yep, Anne's coming in, right?
No critic.
All right, well, there's usually another one at the end, just in case anyone thinks of something or if someone else comes in. All right, next is the consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, would anyone like to make a motion? Okay, moved by Anne, seconded by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Okay, so carried. Okay, we've got certified personnel.
I'll do that.
I'll do that, okay.
Uh, resolve that the probationary dates for Lisa Andrade, a point, uh, one zero, uh, one-point-zero ENL teacher in the Nanyuette School District be changed. The original probationary dates were three-one-twenty-three to three-one-twenty-seven. The new dates will be three-one-twenty-three to three-one-twenty-six. Um, Lisa has a previous tenure in another district, so her probationary period is, uh, is shorter.
Okay, can I have a motion, please? Moved by Anne, seconded by Ray. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so carried.
Resolve that the resignation of Brianna Albanese, teacher in the Nanyuette School District, be accepted effective one-one-two thousand five.
Can I have a motion, please? Moved by Jeff, seconded by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, so carried.
Can I just say something about her letter? Is that?
Yes, of course.
So sometimes we get a letter of resignation that, you know, says something that is, I think, is nice to, to bring out. But this one, uh, was beautiful. It says, "The supportive and positive," I'm only reading part of it. "The supportive and positive environment fostered by the administration, staff, and students had an indelible impact on me both professionally and personally. The collaborative spirit, the emphasis on creativity, and the opportunity to inspire young minds have been a true privilege, and I am profoundly grateful for the chance of being part of such a remarkable school community." I just thought that was beautiful.
Lovely.
So good luck to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, to Brianna.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that, so.
Um, and resolve that the following individuals be approved as substitute teachers in Teaching Assistance effective twelve eighteen twenty-four, Dorinda Sawyer and Diana Dutter.
Okay, can I have a motion? Moved by Sue, seconded by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so carried. All right, we have approval of overnight trips for the DECA club.
Whereas twenty-eight Nanyuette DECA club students have qualified to attend the DECA New York State Conference in Rochester, New York. And whereas, the DECA advisor has made certain that this trip meets the criteria for overnight field trips as stated in Regulation forty-five thirty-one R. Uh, one, twenty-eight students with two chaperones will travel by charter coach to Rochester, New York for the competition on Tuesday, March first, through Friday, March seventh, two thousand twenty-five. Two, costs and incidentals for two chaperones will be reimbursed pursuant to policy from remaining funds in the DECA district budget allocation. And three, uh, the students and their parents will bear the remainder of the cost. Now therefore be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Nanyuette Board of Education approves the three-night, four-day trip to DECA, to the DECA competition in Rochester, New York from March fourth through the seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, sounds great. Can I have a motion, please? Moved by Stephanie, seconded by Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Okay, so carried. Good luck to them.
Can we have a, a process through which if anyone can? Any of these students, for example, who could not maybe afford all those incidental costs?
The, the Board a few year, um, several years ago now, I think, asked us to put five thousand dollars into the budget, and I think that handles most of it.
Okay.
Um, and that was the, that was the reason at the time, so that some of the kids could go.
And, and the people who are chaperoning and, and Mike knows that.
Their costs are covered through that, too.
Right, okay, thank you.
It's not an endless amount of money, but it, it helps.
No, no, well, hopefully the incidentals aren't an endless amount of money. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, um, policies. We have the second reading and approval of policies, uh, three policies that we have been speaking about for the last, uh, couple meetings. So this one is second reading and approval of revised policy eleven-twenty, School District Records. Any questions or anything on it?
Anything, do you want me to read, uh, or just what was revised, uh, for the policy number eleven-twenty? It's regarding school district records. Um, this is a NISPA policy that's required, we had an update that was required, and it's just a recent amendment to the Freedom of Information Law. Now requires adoption of a policy to notify employees whenever the district responds to a FOIA request for their disciplinary records. So it's just an update that we need to notify the employee within five days that we're giving that information.
Okay, so, can I have a motion, please? Okay, moved by Anne, seconded by Ray. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so carried. Okay, the second policy
is the revised policy, sorry, twenty-one twenty-point-two voting procedures. Right, so this policy, um, needs updates for allowing scanned and paper ballots. So it was just something that was, uh, required, but previous policy referred to, uh, voting machines only, and we've gone to, um, the scanning and paper ballots. So the update, uh, was also needed for new early mail ballot requirements. So NISPA hasn't sent that update yet, however, um, you will see that we have a sample policy from another district. We'll be doing that one soon.
That's right. So be resolved, the Nanyuette Board of Education approves the attached revised policy twenty-one twenty-point-two voting procedures. Can I have a motion, please? Moved by, uh, Sue, seconded by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so carried. All right, and then the last policy for tonight is second reading and approval of revised policy forty-seven sixty-five, online distance and remote learning.
So forty-seven sixty-five, uh, was a required update sent by NISPA, um, to reflect expectations for remote learning during emergenc, emergency school closures. So the speci, the specifics of the plan are already included in the district's emergency response plan that's required by SED, so the district annually, uh, surveys parents about internet access and access to, to devices, so all kids have, um, all the internet that they need to, yeah, attend their classes. so all kids have all the internet that they need to, yeah, attend their classes.
Okay, so be it resolved, the Nanyuett Board of Education approves the attached revised policy number four seven six five, online distance and remote learning. Can I have a motion, please?
Aye.
Moved by Stephanie, seconded by Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so carried. Three more policies. Check drop.
The youngest list.
Check, 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 check. All right, unfinished business. I don't know if there was anything else. If not, we are moving on. Rockland County School Boards. We do, we actually just received, I think, the invitation recently for the January sixth legislative webinar, which Andy was on the committee setting all that up. Do you have a list of who, who said yes they were coming in terms of legislators or not yet?
Oh, no, we don't know that full list yet.
Yeah, they're still.
Most of them are coming.
Okay, great.
Two brand-new ones. One, one who I spoke with yesterday had no idea about him. So he's supposedly coming, and there's another one who said he wouldn't come, but having been spoken to, he's now coming. So we're assuming that all of them will be part of the conversation.
Okay.
What we really like is for the board members to be present on the Zoom,
Yes, so, right.
because, you know, they know how many participants are there, so it will.
We, we usually have a good show for Nanyuett, yeah.
It will help us when we are, yeah, you know, to say, you know, on the webinar, there were forty-five people on the webinar
Right.
who are elected.
Yes.
You know, and these are their concerns, because it's really important for them, for us to say, we are also elected.
Right.
Because we have the same people who vote for you, vote for us. It makes a difference when you're talking about, you know, trying to move, move things, so.
Well, there's going to be like an informative, kind of an informational section where everyone does a little part on several different topics.
Yeah.
What are the main topics you're focusing on?
Try to do every year, first of all, not give a laundry list of fifty things that we want.
Right, I know, usually narrow it down.
We never do one in five, and, and I'm stretching it to do five. And, you know, sometimes we want to do more, but we keep it at five, because we found out over the years that when you have only five, or even less, which we've done in a couple of years, you're pinpointing it, and they'll remember five. They'll say, oh, yeah, I remember the school board talked about whatever it is, e-buses or whatever the topic might be. And after, there's six of us on the, on the legislative committee, we each have assigned a piece of the information that will be given out that night. But what we do is when we structure it, we structure it and get all the information out with our members. They do not speak. They're just the audience. At the end of our presentation, then they can address us. Because when we found it, when we did it the other way, the whole evening was taken up by conversations of the politicians, and they never got our message, so now they get our message first, and then, then we can have a dialogue.
And then they address those issues, hopefully.
Well, we have been that with each one of them prior to the evening.
Okay.
So that we didn't also, we didn't want them to, you know, come in like they don't know what we're talking about.
Right.
They're going to be fully informed about what we're talking about.
So you told them what the topics are going to be? They can come with all their data and information?
So if they have bills that they're putting forward, they can give us the names of the bills, the number of the bills or whatever.
Okay.
So that, so that it's, for them, it's like a heads up, this is what we're going to be talking about. These are the bills that are out there that will be part of whatever. And so it makes it a much more informative evening when they know what we're talking about ahead of time, so that they can do their homework. And the two new people that are coming, you know, who really know nothing, because this is their first time being part of the state government, it really does help them to get a running start. So it, I think it'll be a good night, but we just have to make sure we get enough board members, you know, sign up to come.
You're talking new people, as in Pat Carroll?
And, and Aaron Reader from Monsey.
Uh, he says he's coming?
Yes, syllable. We will see.
Okay, let's.
Um, we meet with Pat Carroll either this Thursday or right at the beginning of the new year, depending on his calendar, so I don't know that yet, but.
Okay.
But it's good to be with them ahead of time to get them up to speed.
So, I thought in the past, we've had, when it used to be a dinner, you know, legislative dinner, we also had PTA people come, and are we extending it to?
I would imagine they could come, surely, sure, there's a certain.
Right, to others, because I mean, that's also the way to get the information out there,
I mean, yeah, yeah.
the things that we're advocating for, you know, to the PTAs, so PTA Council, PTAs.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I know we just got, I was just looking for, we just got the invitation recently. I can't find it, of course, right now, but that would just see if we can spread it a little further.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a webinar, it's a Zoom. A lot of people can get on Zooms, but they might not be able to show up in person, you know, especially when it was a full-fledged event.
Well, I think once the pandemic hit, and everybody started going on Zoom for different things, they realized the advantages of doing something on a Zoom.
I think.
A webinar is a perfect example of that. You know, people would, don't have to get out to get to a place to, or whatever. They can just sit down in their home and they can, and do it.
Yeah, it makes a difference. Right. I mean, it.
There are some things where it's been really important that those things happen.
So what we'll do, Annie, maybe is try and get it out to, we'll just make sure we have everyone's emails. Teachers also, because teachers, you know, I think they're important too. PTAs, teachers, obviously board members, administrators, you know, whoever can get on.
Mm-hmm. Sure. Yeah. Yeah.
And that way we really, because usually Nanyuett has very good participation in a lot of things, so I think we can, because a lot of people are very interested.
Well, the funny thing, the funny thing was, anytime we have anything, the comment is always, oh, well, Nanyuett, they always show up.
And we, yeah, at things we have like our own table or two, because we are.
That's true, right.
That's right. It's great.
Well, because we are concerned, we're, we care, we want to advocate, so.
I mean, it's, it's. Yep, yep, yep.
So hopefully we can get a good number of people there, because I, like you said, I think it shows the legislators, if people are interested, I mean, they, they, these are their constituents. So let's, let's show them what our concerns are.
Exactly.
And they have the, you have the opportunity on the webinar, for those who have never attended one like this, to like, put in questions.
Yes, they can.
Because it is a speak-only, you know, listen-only thing, but you can type in, you can put it in the chat, so.
Yeah, you can type in the chat. Oh, we, we met with Senator Weber, and he was, he was, he was really right on. He knows exactly what's going on. And so, so the conversation with him only lasted probably a half hour. It wasn't a long time, because he knew what was happening. You know, he's been around now, so he knows the big, big ticket items for school boards. So that's just why it's important, because then they're really on board with you.
Okay. Right, so that's Monday, January sixth at seven P M.
Yes.
And we will make sure that we, you know, get the invitation out there and really try to get good showing.
Yeah, so they'll probably want to know who's coming, so.
Because I think that would be. Yes, yeah, we'll get some kind of an O S P P going, so. Okay, great.
Christine, how long do those usually last?
I think they usually try and keep it with an hour or so, hour and a half at the most.
An hour and a half.
Yeah, ninety minutes at the most.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm thinking.
Usually faster than that. Our presentation, our presentation is down to about fifteen to twenty minutes, because it's highlight stuff, high-level stuff, so, yeah.
And then each legislator gets to speak, so depending on how long they speak, and how many are on.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I'm, I'm thinking, it's usually, they've really been pretty good about trying to keep it to an hour, hour fifteen, so, right.
They're good. Yeah. They want to get off to.
A lot of one knows, everyone's time is valuable, so, yeah, right.
Everyone's time is valuable.
So they try to respect that.
Yeah.
You know, so we'll see. Okay, and then our next Rockland County School Boards meeting isn't until February, because January is the webinar, but.
Right. Yeah.
So that'll be the next thing. Okay, New York State School Boards, yeah.
Yes, two things, well, a couple of things. The governor signed two legislations. The first one was shorten the period of time over which transportation aid is provided to a district for purchasing cost of zero emission school buses from twelve to eight years. NISBA strongly went for that, and she signed that bill. The second, she signed Bill Senate three three nine seven A nine zero one one, and it requires school boards to enact policies for and require staff to take action when indoor heat reaches or exceed eighty-two degrees. The new law further directs that rooms that reach eighty-eight degrees must be immediately vacated, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, it's really funny, we're right in the middle of our bonds, we're going to have all of our rooms air-conditioned, so this should probably not be a Nanyuett problem. But I will tell you, it is a problem for a lot of school districts across the state, including Rockland County,
Of course, of course.
School districts who do not have that, so.
There's still, there, there's still several that don't have.
Kids going home to homes that are not air-conditioned.
Exactly, no.
Yeah.
So we will see what happens in that. I know the governor has said she'll be flexible when she's, um, enacting it, but.
I think they did put, what was the language that they put in there? Something about not practicable. It was actually an interesting term.
Well, they, they added that in a compromise when the legislature got the original bill.
Yeah, yes. Yeah.
And that was put in to give, give a little leeway to the possibility.
For judgment of what is the best for the, yeah, for the kids.
Yeah.
We got to, again, keep some kind of local control of, because every situation's different.
If you can.
So, okay.
And NISBA supported, sent a legislation to the governor that would make reforms to the current Industrial Development Agency, the I D A structures, including requiring each I D A board to have representation from at least one school board member or school superintendent. We in Rockland do not have that problem. The idea is always they come back to the schools before they can do anything, but that's not true in any other county. We're the only county that has that, so this will, will not affect us, assumably, but it will affect all of the other counties. And February seventh is our annual Capitol Conference. It's a virtual one.
Mm-hmm.
And then the actual lobbying day, in-person lobbying day, is February twelfth.
Yep, yeah. And a few of you are planning to go up at this point, right, to all the, I think.
I, I'm going up, I think Sue's going up, I think Stephanie's going up.
All of them.
And anybody else who wants to come with us, you're certainly welcome. I know Rose Mary's coming from South Orange, yeah. Rosie's the president, and Tom DePrisco. As far as I know, there's probably, there may be more, but those I know for sure are going.
Okay.
And Ann, would you repeat that? I don't have that, for some reason, on my calendar.
Uh, February.
February seventh.
I have the twelfth, I don't have the seventh.
Twelve is the, is the virtual.
That's the virtual.
I have the twelfth, I don't have the seventh.
The virtual one is February seventh. And the, the in-person one is February twelfth.
It's just weird that's a Friday, right?
On the national level, they still don't have a funding bill. Friday is the deadline. I can't tell you, because I have no idea how this is going to happen, or if it's going to, it has to happen, because if it doesn't happen, the government shuts down, and Christmas, you know, wonderful time of year, it shuts down the government. But, so we'll see what happens with that funding bill. Right now, in the House, they're the ones that has to get, agree to get that together and get enough votes to pass something. So we'll see.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ann. All right, local government. The next, I guess civic association meeting is in January. I don't know what the date is, though. I don't think I have it in town.
Do you have my calendar?
Yeah, we have a calendar, but, uh, that's usually the first Thursday, so we can, uh,
First Thursday.
I don't know if it'll be right that first week.
Could be.
Does anyone have the date stuff? Do you have the date on, uh?
I actually don't have it in my calendar, but, uh, it's usually the first Thursday.
Okay, I know with the hol, with the holiday, though, right there.
I don't have it.
Oh.
But holidays are. Well, that's a Halloween week, though.
Yeah, but like, it's January.
Oh, yeah, the first Thursday, the second.
The first Thursday is the second of January, so that's what I'm thinking it might be.
Yeah, that's why I, I'm.
I'm not sure about that, yeah.
I'm not sure. I don't have it on either day.
Okay, so we will, yeah.
I might have taken it off the calendar, it's on the ninth, because that's the, um, High View Family Ruler Night that I'll probably go to, so.
I mean, it's posted online.
Roll my.
Right, okay.
I may have taken it off my calendar, but anyway.
Okay, anything else? Okay, anything else? Anyone wants to share? No? Okay. How about the public? We have second public forum. We had another public come in, one more from the public join us, so, anything? Anyone want to address the board? Okay, there's still plenty of time to go vote if you haven't voted yet. We're, the polls are open until nine o'clock. All right, so then we are going to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Have a motion, moved by Lynn, seconded by Stephanie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so carried. Thank you. All have a wonderful night and a very Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, you know, have a wonderful holiday, Happy New Year, and we will see you back in the new year. So, thank you, yes. Festivals, right. Happy holidays. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.